This is Bealy. This is Lyford.
Here.
This is Maffin Gill.
Here.
Dr. Miles. This is Murphy.
Here.
This is Terry.
Here.
This is Shay.
Here.
This is Hobbs.
Here.
This is Hottle. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Um, there are. The meeting minutes of February twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen have turned out to be a little more complicated than they seem to be. So those are still being prepared and they'll be presented at the March twenty-fourth School Board Meeting.
Okay.
So that would table that item of ten point one.
Okay, thank you. And right to the Superintendent's report.
Wow.
Good question.
Very good.
Turn those pages.
Um, I think you all know about the work that's been done up at the State House in terms of general purpose aid and tax conformity, as you probably also already know. Progress appears to have been made in restoring fifteen million dollars of the shortfall in state subsidies to education. That's not the amount that was requested, but it is some. I said, when asked, I said it's better than getting a poke in the eye with a sharp, sharp stick. So, um, but it is still eight to ten million dollars, um, short of what should have been restored. And for Scarborough, there are needs of significant gap in the amount of one million dollars. And we're going to need to, um, address that in our budget planning for twenty-seven, twenty-seventeen. And we've, um, started that discussion even at the Joint Finance Committee meeting today. I'll hear more about that. One of the things I wanted to do is to provide you with an update from the Scarborough Arts Council. I don't know that you've heard much about what has been going on with that group, but I provided an earlier report to the board as it relates to the accomplishments of the Health Safety, Security, and Wellness Advisory Team. And so I thought tonight that I'd briefly update you on the work and accomplishments of the Scarborough, um, Scarborough Schools Arts Council. Just a team of school staff representatives, leadership council, council representatives, and dedicated community members who are really volunteers. The Arts Council, as some of you will remember, was created in response to a very generous donation that we received, um, from the estate of Louis and Tina Feinberg. Specifically targeted was to ensure that the back Scarborough Backpack Program never ended, I suppose, if that's possible, and to support music and arts education for our students. So this council is in the final steps of awarding grants. We've been working for quite some time in terms of really looking at what we have in terms of the arts in Scarborough, what is really missing, or what would be the next important opportunity for, for our students. And we're in the final step of awarding grants for some pretty exciting programs. These have not been finalized, but they do include the addition of individualized vocal instruction at Scarborough High School, um, and the expansion of small group and individualized instrumental instruction for Scarborough middle school and high school students, and a restoration of a full-scale reinvented district-wide art show that commenced in twenty seventeen. I remember coming in as a new superintendent five years ago, and I met with, I can't tell you how many people, I think there were upwards of, um, upwards of two hundred individual meetings. And much of what people were bemoaning was the loss of the Scarborough Art Show. So this is not a replacement per se of that. It is really reinvented, and it's a broader focus on the arts, but it would be commencing in twenty seventeen, and that would be sort of every other year that that would happen. And finally, a very exciting, the last proposal that is being vetted is the creation of a new strings program to be introduced to our third graders. Students and their parents would be introduced to this whole program by way of the Portland Symphony, and would come and do a kinder concert for us, and as well the Thornton Academy Orchestra would play a similar role in terms of introducing what this might look like someday in Scarborough. Similar to the model that's utilized by the Scarborough Education Foundation, grant money would be intended to seed some of these pilot programs to get them started up, and then a sustainability plan would be developed for those that receive the most amount of enthusiasm and support from the community, because it would also require resources. Switching gears, um, related to inquiry-based instruction or inquiry-based learning, this was, there were a number of areas that the board, back in twenty fifteen, wished to explore, different topics and different, different concepts that they wanted to learn more about. One of those related to inquiry-based instruction or inquiry-based learning. So tonight, Monique, I've invited her to enlighten us and share with us what exactly inquiry-based instruction and learning is all about. And I'll just quickly answer the question, why do we do inquiry-based learning or inquiry-based instruction? And the simple answer is that it's a very highly effective research-based model for learning. Interestingly enough, our adult model of learning that we're using, our professional learning teams, is an inquiry-based model. And you probably would not be surprised to hear that it does have some connection to Marzano.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
No, he didn't invent it.
No, he did not invent it.
True.
It's based in the theories of the Gottschalk and Piaget, who are well-known in this district. So it is, it's a model for instruction, and simply put, it involves questions, problems, or scenarios to help students learn. I've given you some handouts there, two PowerPoint slides per page, so you can read the text here, so I won't go through and read every slide. But simply put, again, questions, problems, or scenarios to help students learn. One of the pieces that makes this instructional model so powerful is that it does place students at the center of the learning process, because they're doing the work. And I'm going to give you some examples of what that looks like. They're doing the work, and it takes the teacher and puts the teacher on the side, and they, the teacher then has the opportunity to really think about, listen to, and observe both the student's work and their knowledge and their thinking. So it's a very powerful instructional model. It often involves group work, and it's often cross-disciplinary and authentic. So for example, what I'm going to highlight this evening is, I'm going to highlight the middle school science piece, and I have Kathy Terrell here and Barbara Hassorn. Kathy Terrell is the six, twelve instructional coach, and she is responsible for coordinating and working with me, this is all sciences areas, and Barbara Hassorn is the principal at the middle school. So if you have detailed questions, they're my backup. Very often, it can begin with an open-ended question. It can be a wide-open question, or it can be a very focused question. We often refer to those as essential questions, and we have essential questions embedded in our curriculum across all content as well. It's not completely wide-open. We don't ask kids to just come up with their own questions, but it's designed to meet specific learning goals and standards, so it's focused on our core curriculum areas and goals. It also involves obtaining evidence and explaining the evidence, and engages students into justifying their thinking and their rationale and their findings. So it involves creating argument and justification for the explanation, and this, if you recall, our ELA standards, we're calling it career readiness, is crucial in that area, in that arena. Also, in terms of our Marzano work, it's not in a whole separate piece, but Marzano actually allocates an entire module or chapter of his instructional model in and around this. It's called DQ four. He refers to it as helping students generate and test hypotheses. So our example is going to come from the middle school. Kathy has been working with the middle school science teachers. We've identified a curriculum and we're in the first year of implementation. It is long-winded, called Investigating and Questioning Our World Through Science and Technology. We refer to it as IQuest for short. Developed through NSF-funded funding, and it's published by Activate Learning. It's integrated science, so it's every science every year. They refer to it as investigation centers. And there are four units per grade level, so a unit takes up pretty much an entire term. So students do get quite a deep level of content knowledge and learning and experiences in that area. This page describes to you the scope and sequence. So for example, I know this is a little tiny, students are doing in sixth grade, physical science, a bit of introduction to chemistry, life science, and earth. We do every science every year. When we worked on doing research around curriculum for the middle school, we involved the high school teachers as well in that selection process. So they are well on board with this. As a matter of fact, the department chair of the high school was very excited because they said, this is the curriculum that most closely resembles what scientists actually do. So for example, every unit is a question. How can I smell things from a distance? Can I believe my eyes? And it focuses on investigating those questions. Here's a sixth grade science unit. It's called, How Can I Smell Things From A Distance? Smells is a very popular topic in middle school with middle school students. So for example, this is organized in learning sets. This has three learning sets. The first learning set focuses, how does an odor get from the source to my nose? Every lesson involves another inquiry. So the students will either observe phenomena or be involved in investigation. They will generate questions. They will come up with, they will gather their data, and they will contribute to what's called a driving question board. You'll notice the question in red there. In the very center of that, how can I smell things from a distance? On the right-hand side are parking lot questions and items. On the left-hand side are the scientific principles that they come up with. But in the middle, that's where students generate their questions, they post their findings, their ideas, they even will post, you'll see the baggie over there, they'll even post certain pieces of evidence or models that they've built. Part of this curriculum also involves students building their models and revising their models as they're learning deepest. And so here you see students presenting a board, they're responding to that question, they're sharing their models and having scientific discourse with each other, and trying to explain their understanding through their models. Here are a couple of driving question boards around, can I believe my eyes? Same kind of a layout, sometimes they look different across different classes. But also, here are some examples of some very creative models that the students present, and they have to share with each other or with the teacher what their model represents and how it explains the scientific principles. So as they're capturing them in pictures and they might adjust their models, this is where Disney figures come into play, and lots of tape and clay, and even Legos come into play here, anything students can use to help describe their understanding and their thinking. And you've got some slides of some models that students have created. In grade seven, here's another example. This is our science unit, what makes the weather change? To get a sense of the questions within each of the lessons. This particular unit culminates in a final project where students have to use the evidence they've collected, the scientific principles that they've developed, to explain why two cities in opposite hemispheres vary in their weather and pattern. So there's a writing component. There's quite a, one of the pieces that was very appealing was the literacy component within this science curriculum, because there are readings that students need to do, and they do need to do some writing. Here's a picture of a driving question board. You'll notice on the left-hand side, conditions, temperature, wind, clouds, precipitation. But they also need to put together a claim, evidence, reasoning document. In the back of your packet on the last page describes, plays a little poster that the teachers use with the students. And this has been working with the students and teaching them how to, how to make a claim, provide the evidence, and then the reasoning that supports that claim. And again, this is a very rigorous, common core standard in ELA that we work on. This image here are, you can see in the different colors there, those are the class statements around all the questions, the claim, the evidence, and the reasoning. And so students use that information to present together. Student reactions. In the first quote, you get a sense of the depth. Instead of a bunch of topics, it stays on a topic, and it helps us learn it better. The next two quotes are interesting, because one student said, this year there are more experiments. Another student said, last year, we did a lot more experiments than this year. And that's part of where our curriculum was going. It was becoming fragmented. You've often heard me talk about how we've gotten about more than sixteen years out of our previous science curriculum. Materials were literally disintegrating, including the boxes. And so some teachers were able to do more experiments with students than other teachers were able to. Now we have the materials and the resources, and there's another core science curriculum that's equitable across our classrooms. But in that third quote, I'm learning more because we conduct experiments, discuss the experiment, review it several times, especially because we revise our models as we learn more information. So that gives you, even if students understand that they're doing science, that scientists do. And then simply put, one student just said, it's more interesting. In terms of materials and teacher preparation, we provided professional development for teachers to work with a consultant from the company, but it's materials-heavy, with all the stuff that is involved with doing science, and the teachers work together during their common time during the day to craft and go through the lessons to make sure that they are providing quality lessons. But that timepiece is maximized. In summary, what we're talking about here in terms of this inquiry-based instruction is college and careers to the readiness. And again, it involves questions, problems, scenarios, students have to work together, learn to work together. The discussion board, that's a project space like scientists do, and when scientists have their findings published, it's all about claims, evidence, and reasoning. But it's not just found in science. We have essential questions across the board. So here's some examples from social studies. K two, teachers got together and talked about, okay, cross, cross all our content, what do we really focus now? What do we really want students to consider? In a K two, it's what's a good citizen and how can I become one? Am I, and what are my roles in my community? Pre-five, we have specific to, these are just examples, specifics in history and literacy, because the two are quite tied, are tied together quite closely. How are the ideas and attitudes of people in the past similar and different to those of today? Grade eight, how can I make a difference in democracy? High school, civics, and government, where the rights, duties, responsibilities of citizens. So when we get a content area together of teachers and we're working on the vertical articulation of our curriculum, we also talk about not just standards and learning goals, but what are the essential questions that are going to guide the instruction, and as well, across our content? Thank you. Questions?
I actually have a question. So the chart that you showed us, where it's like grades six, seven, and eight, and it kind of breaks it up by quarter, I know that you've talked briefly about how towards like seventh and eighth grade, the high school, like, department heads kind of help with them planning how it works. So I was just wondering, do the high school teachers like get a say in which topics they should cover? Or is it more like what general direction they should go, and then the middle school teachers kind of decide which topics?
Great question. Several different answers to that. When we were identifying this curriculum, this is the way in which these topics were placed together, so there wasn't a whole lot of choice in terms of where things go. That said, though, for example, we try and work with other teachers as well. So for example, at the middle school, the health teachers, before they do their unit on smoking, in our previous curriculum, our teachers would do some pieces around how lungs work and the body systems, which would help set up the health teachers. That shifted, so we need to work together and continue to tweak this curriculum to make sure some things line up. The high school teachers are, they were involved in helping identify some of the topics. We've also invited, we haven't, because of the timepiece, they have a different time structure, have the high school teachers come and visit some science classrooms to have conversations and to continue to build those relationships, so they can see what students are working from, and build upon that at the high school portion. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We don't have any questions. Very clear presentation.
Wonderful. Try to be succinct.
Would anybody mind if I put my hat on? You know, I had surgery on my eye.
No, no, go ahead.
The lights are bothering.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monique.
Thank you.
And thank you, Kathy and Barbara, for being here. Um, one-to-one laptops at the high school. You'll remember the update that Jen Lim presented to the board. That was actually our school board workshop in January. There was also a video that misfired at that time. And so this is take two of the video. It's now, it's actually, the good news is it's gone through another iteration, and we have it for you tonight. It's new and improved, and it's going to work. And it's about six or seven minutes long, Jen?
It's about five minutes.
Okay.
We cut it down. We boiled it down to its pure essence.
We use it to like write essays, the homework.
Our chemistry teacher has like Google Classroom up, and he just posts like links and stuff to help us with our homework, so we can all go in, and it's just a group of us, and we can ask questions and like connect with him. It's a lot easier just with like the connection piece to like classmates and teachers. It's just a lot easier to get things done. You can use it anywhere, like anytime, as long as you have a connection.
So far, my experience has been wonderful and fast, a fast change. And it's also allowed me to be a lot more interactive with them when they're writing. I can help them with editing through Google Docs by suggesting comments, edits, and things like that while they're writing or after they've written.
So it's not like it's really changed the way that you teach and the way that you're able to provide feedback to students.
It definitely has, and it's a gradual thing, because we've gone, most of my career here at Scarborough, not having them, so it's sort of a gradual adapting, but the students have really started to get comfortable with it, and I'm getting more and more comfortable with remembering that we have them and sort of planning that way.
Well, the laptops helped a lot this year from last year, because I had my own laptop last year, and it was kind of weird, because like I would try to use it by myself, but the teachers weren't like used to using it too, so I would have to like work over the two separate things, so it helped there. Mr. Jones class, we did the voice thread, and that was neat. I'd never done that before. It's where you use the voice to text software behind your PowerPoint, so that was neat.
Laptops has made a huge difference for me and for my students, really, primarily in the classroom. Because in the past, if I had an assignment of needing to access our online textbook material or an article, I would ask them to take out their phones. Not all students had phones or had Wi-Fi enabled. In class, we typically use them for accessing Google Classroom. There may be an assignment that I have that I've asked them to go into, and they can all work in that assignment. They can have their individual copies of the assignment. There's no need to be passing it out to them. So they, if it's an assignment that is related to writing, they can begin working in it, and I can see their work as they're progressing through the assignment. And they can see each other's work if I make that accessible to them. So it's a great tool for, for many.
What was it like going from the middle school to an environment where there were no laptops?
Yeah, it was difficult. I spent a long time in the library using the computers in the library, which is kind of a pain, because you can't use it in the classroom. I use my laptop more in the classroom, and we don't have to sign up for the computer lab in the library, which is really annoying, because it's not always open, so teachers get really frustrated with that, or they used to get really frustrated with that.
Right now, is because they have access to certain programs on their laptops, they can do, continue doing work at home that they normally would not have been able to continue doing. So, you know, before, where it was just limited to what we were accomplishing in a lab, it basically ended at the end of class, whereas now, I can teach kids certain skills or exercises in class, and then they can continue sort of developing that skill set at home. So that's been, you know.
So my primary role is to provide support for staff members, and really, I'm a professional development source. I'm an in-house professional development, where they can come, they can ask questions, they can, again, from basic level, how do I do this, to, hey Jen, I have this great idea, but I'm not quite sure how to implement it. Can you come into my classroom and observe? Can you come into my classroom and teach a lesson for me, so I can learn how to do this on my own? Getting them to do things with the computers that they wouldn't be able to do otherwise. So having them design project-based learning opportunities for students, and having them create videos and multimedia projects that, again, they wouldn't be able to do without having the Lenovo Yoga device.
But I think it's got a lot of possibilities for the future for me and what I do in U.S. history, and in economics, and in physics.
More effective I've become as a teacher already, because of the ability to use the laptops, and I'm really excited about, like, we're just getting started. I feel like the next couple of years, there's so many things that we're going to be able to do.
Yeah, I think, I think overall, it's been, I think it's been really successful in sort of eliminating all this extra, extra classroom stuff that we don't need. It's all just right there, successful for them.
Definitely this year, having it has like been a really good like improvement, and it's definitely something that I use all the time, and use it at home, use it here, and it's better than not having it.
So that's sort of boiled down into the five-minute version, but one of the things that I wanted to emphasize is, this is, we put this together in interviews that took place over maybe two days. We actually had a list of students and staff who wanted to participate, who wanted to be interviewed, and we just couldn't get to all of them. So I thought that was great. We did have an opportunity yesterday to have a meeting with the high school staff who are representing the different departments on the technology team. Fantastic feedback from them. So pleased. I mean, they reported in on what all their departments are doing, and they're really, really creative, different things. As Scott Naylor pointed out, I think the amount of success that they've had and how far they've come in such a short period of time, it has been really astounding to everybody. A lot of that is due to the fact that there's a full-time technology integrator at the high school. That's made a huge difference, because that's Jen Adams that you saw in the video, and she's somebody who goes in and works one-on-one with the staff primarily, but she will work with the students as well. She responds to their questions, she'll hold drop-in sessions. If you ever have a chance to go out to the technology calendar, technology training calendar on our intranet, you'll see that she does a ton of sessions all the time. Some of them are like hour-long sessions, but a lot of them are, you know, fifteen-minute drop-in sessions. At the end of school, come on, you know, over to room whatever, and you can kind of see what people are doing with Google Mail, you can see what people are doing with Google Classroom, get an overview. And then I think from there, their interest peaks, and they kind of go back in and get more information. In talking to a lot of the students and staff, what we found is, a lot of them are not just using Google Classroom, but are really dependent on it now, in order to communicate with their students, to assign their classwork, and then get feedback and kind of put questions, and the whole, the whole class will really interact via Google Classroom. So in this, I tried to put together- So in this, I tried to, um, put together some screen casts to kind of show you what it looks like. Because I think if you've never seen Google Classroom, so if you don't have a student who, you know, is in there all the time, you haven't had an opportunity to sit with them, you probably haven't really seen what Google Classroom is. So we tried to put together some screen casts so you can kind of see what that looks like, see what it looks like to edit a document in, uh, Google Docs. There's a lot of other applications that they use in Google Apps. And then there's a lot of other online, as you saw in Christine's Aznitz section there. There's a lot of other online tools that teachers have, have found from Flash, uh, to Bokab, Word, to, you know, different quizzes and, uh, things like that. So I think the progress that they've made so far is really amazing. And what we intend to do is maybe at this time next year, we'll follow it up with another short video so you can kind of see what, what more they've done with them. And I, I'm hoping to hear a little bit more from the students too. I do intend at some point to, to roll in the other schools with this so you can kind of see a broad spectrum of what it looks like one-to-one from Wentworth to third grade on up through 12th and see the progress that's made, you know, throughout the different phase levels. So questions? The, the one thing I will say that I, I, um, had a, um, a request from Dave Preach, says, um, put in a plug for additional training time because the teachers are really in need of kind of, you know, that early or late start so that they can have some time to actually train on the devices and then on Google Classroom and kind of all of these other things. They're getting a lot of training from their peers. So it's great because we're not having to, you know, hire other people to come in to train them. They go out, their peers, well, you know, you always have sort of, the pioneers, right? The pioneers can go out and kind of find the program, find the app, you know, figure out cool new ways to use, um, the devices and, and use different apps. And then they come in and they'll teach their peers. So they'll take fifteen, twenty minutes at the start of a department head meeting and they'll go in and, and, you know, show their, their peers how to do it. And then hopefully that'll spark interest. We'll pull Jen Adams in, have a, a larger training session.
From, from the presentation, I had the impression that the teachers can monitor the student while the student is writing. And the, do the students then send that document to the teachers as opposed to turning in a paper?
Yes. You, you don't even, they don't even need to send it because within Google Docs. What they'll do is they'll write a document and then they'll share it out. So they don't, if, if a teacher also could say, well, I would like a group of you to work on this project together and they can share it out to a group of their peers. So everybody, as you saw online, it was essence dot earth class. There were multiple students in the same document editing it at the same time online. Yeah, so it reduces the amount of paper that has to be printed and handed in and potentially could be lost and marked up and, yeah.
So Jen Adams' role, I'm assuming this year, a lot of it focused on the basics of how to implement this in your classroom. But her role ultimately will be a resource for teachers to use how to incorporate technology into a specific lesson, correct? Like, okay, I'm teaching them how to smell, smell things from far away or whatever. So they can work with Jen to dig deeper into programs or apps or online resources, correct?
Yeah, and I, that's true. I mean, she does a lot of that. So they'll, they'll say, you know, in the video, they'll come to her and say, I have a great idea why I have this new work. I'm stoked, you know, I know it's not, it's helping their, you know, type of life. And so she'll go out, she'll find, you know, she'll get it, she'll, she'll have it and then she'll go out and read it out. You know, you are, you're just like, that's cool. But she really, she's a problem solver. She's also, um, a, a gift. So they're allowed to find things that she also thinks are important to do, right? And so there are things this year, it's really like starting with tables because all the teachers don't have laptops before. Not many students have, they don't have laptops, um, not all students have access to the technology. There's more fortunately, there's a lot of technology outside of the, of the, of the, so we, we, we're not so comfortable. We, um, we're not comfortable with, you know, that, um, we, we, that, you know, the, 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 like, they, they, everybody uses it for their stuff.
Donna is out of town, so I am doing the chairs report. And, um, basically, it seems like a lot of stuff gets scheduled in March because nothing's going on in March. Why don't we put it in March? Turns out now, everything happens in March, so I don't want to steal any thunder from Lizzie's report, but just in my own household today, we were at Wentworth at six something this morning because Channel thirteen was there, um, seeing the Jim Dandies in action for two hours. Then there's the middle school play having practice. The eighth graders are playing. The staff members of the middle school today for a basketball game. All like, that's just happening in my life, March. It's, things are going on, but I'm sure you have a lot of that covered, so.
I didn't have the basketball game, so it's good.
Okay, well, that's happening. The score when I left actually was a hundred and ninety-seven to one. I think there's some inaccurate scorekeeping going on there.
The, the boys against grade eight grades.
It was, when I was there, it was eighth grade girls against, um, female staff.
And the staff had proven correct.
The staff had a hundred and ninety-seven is what, is what the score was.
I believe Mr. Bennett was bragging about never losing.
Yeah, I think I know how that happened.
He was probably running the score machine.
Yeah, I would say. Yeah. Keeping the score.
Yeah. So, anyway, um, we are also heading, uh, straight into, um, the superintendent search is picking up. We've been working closely with, um, Dr. Benedictus, De Benedictus, um, formulating, uh, our list of priorities and candidates, and there have been many focus groups held with community members and staff members and business leaders and pretty much any stakeholder in town you can think of had an opportunity to weigh in in addition to, um, an online survey that was available for anyone to fill out. Um, the screening and interview committee has been finalized, and I will let you know who that is now. So Christine Massengill from the school board, Kelly Murphy from the school board, Robbie Molton, um, chief of police, Kelly Crosby, school administrator, Barbara Hathorn, school administrator, Lisa Roberts, teacher, Justin Stevens is also a teacher, Rick Davies is a K to five parent representative, um, Kristen Allen is a parent of a middle school student, Wesley Franklin is a high school parent, Art Dillon from the Chamber of Commerce, uh, Lizzie Hobbs, student school board representative, Joanne Sizemore, assistant superintendent, Kelly Johnston, central office staff, Bill Donovan from the town council, and Ken De Benedictus from Nesdeck is going to help facilitate the screening process and help us run the interviews, so that is getting underway, March twenty-first and twenty-second, and that should be a whirlwind, and I'm hoping for a lot of good candidates, so we have a really hard time choosing. I'm sure that's what we'll find. Um, I think that's all I have now for the chair and report. We can go to the committee report. Who wants to start committee report? Jody?
Oh, I'll start.
Jody, I thought your hand was in there. Um, so the finance committee has been meeting, and we had a full day today of financing. We had our joint town council and school board, uh, finance committee meetings this afternoon where we talked about a variety of things. Um, it's encouraging to sit in that room and sort of talk as a larger group about things that are affecting us as a whole. So it was, it's, it's a great process, and I think kudos to everyone who started it last year, but it's moving in the right direction. Um, we talked about, a lot about operational costs versus capital, um, expenses and how those are determined, and, um, I think we all agreed that we sort of need to take a longer, harder look at those expenses that have formally or currently are in the capital, um, budget and, and figure out, are there ways to move some of those back into operations? So, that will be an ongoing discussion for, for quite some time, I think. We also, um, talked a little bit about the budget forum. George and Tom Hall and Sean Beibin and I will sit down and sort of hash out, um, the, the basics on how that will go, and I think what we, we felt as a group is that comes, uh, April seventh, which is the day after the release of the budget, we'll start accepting questions. Like we did last year, we, um, accepted questions ahead of time for that budget forum, and, um, we'll do the same thing this year. We have the budget portal, which we all talked about, hopefully we remember, and so we'll promote it there. We'll put questions from last year on there. So it's just one sort of location for everyone to go to, um, to get the basic information. And that budget forum will happen April twenty-seventh at the auditorium. We talked about fund balance. I know, you guys are all very jealous of this exciting meeting, right? Um, and, um, there's more, you know, more to discuss there. It's hard, there's a lot of things that we're sort of trying to juggle with the loss of revenue, um, fund balance, how do we work with capi-, you know, capital budget first operational budget, so there's a lot of big sort of decisions that need to be made, and, and I think we all agreed at that meeting that it can't all happen at once, but if you could start, start talking about it and figuring out how we move forward. Then tonight at six-thirty, we had just the school board's finance committee meeting, and we started talking, you know, about FY seventeen and, and that budget and how that's progressing with the leadership and how they, they started working probably for weeks now at this point, maybe even months, on their budget and how that will get pared down and, and presented on April sixth. Thank you. Jackie, do you want to give us a negotiations update?
Uh, they're really, it, we have a tentative date of the twenty-fourth, I believe, starting at about three-thirty, and, uh, but that has not yet been firmed up. Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And, uh, main school boards association is, you know, I'm on their legislative committee, and we are still, uh, lobbying, if you will, for more money, uh, for education. At least, uh, five million more. We think that's attainable, but we'll just have to see what transpires.
Okay. Chair?
Um, yeah. Uh, communications, um, we got our first new letter out, Lizzie, so that was exciting. Um, we are still continuing to try and grow the, uh, readership on that and get more people to subscribe to it, working out all the kinks there. Um, so coming up, I think that we may be working on educating the public more about the conversation about starting school later, those later start times, involving those public in that conversation and, um, hearing their thoughts on that, raising the consciousness there. And down the line, we'll be working on, um, communicating about budget and the direction that that might be headed.
Good. And do you have any report?
Uh, long range planning is going to be having another meeting just to discuss, uh, some new signings and conversations around what our plans are, and we'll be having a report out to the rest of the board sometime, probably in April. I'm not sure which one it is.
So the policy committee met a few weeks ago, and we reviewed, um, essentially, we spent a bulk of the time reviewing the wellness policy, which has been about a two-year, three-year endeavor. Um, there are a lot of requirements that came along with, um, school nutrition program, federally funded dollars required certain things to be in a wellness policy, so that, um, has been a work in progress with, um, a huge group of staff and leadership, including a representative from the Opportunity Alliance, the Five Two One O Let's Go, and they now have a very comprehensive draft, which we reviewed, um, maybe a couple tweaks that had to happen to it, and then it will come before the board. Um, we are sort of on pause right now because the other two members of the policy committee are out of state, so I can't probably just approve things on my own, I think. So I am going to, um, we're gonna wait until everyone's back, and then we're gonna have a long policy meeting. They're gonna pay for their vacations, we have marathon sessions. Um, and as far as the calendar committee goes, I'll save those comments for our agenda item that refers to the calendar. Moving on to student representative report.
Right, so like you said earlier, lots of stuff is going on, and since Emma's not here, I'm gonna read her stuff real quick. So for the primary schools, the primary schools are currently in the midst of doing their parent, teacher, student conferences, um, and they're gonna be holding kindergarten screening and registration, uh, starting the week of March twenty-eighth. Um, each of the schools is hosting a book fair to benefit their school libraries, so those interested in going to sports fairs should contact each school for the individual dates and times. Um, and then Wentworth, like you mentioned earlier, uh, the Jim Dandies are holding their thirty-fifth annual community performance. Um, it's gonna be March eleventh at six-thirty PM and then March twelfth at two-thirty PM and six-thirty PM. Um, the middle school, um, they, the final meeting for the parents of current eighth grade students who are interested in participating in the Baby Think It Over program, um, that meeting is gonna be on March twenty-third in room one fifty-seven, um, and then parents who have experience with the program should get there at six, and then parents who are new to the program should get there at about six fifteen. Um, and then the Scarborough Middle School Theater Team is putting on Bye Bye Birdies, the young performers edition, um, starting Friday, March eighteenth at six PM, uh, and then Saturday, March nineteenth at two and six, and then Sunday, March twentieth at two. Um, and that's gonna be at the auditorium in the high school. On March seventh, which was this past Monday, they had the Step Up Night for the eighth graders and their parents, um, which was hosted at the high school. So the students and parents were able to ask questions about kind of the high school transition and experience to four of the Scarborough High School students, me and Emma included, um, as well as a lot of the department heads and administration. Um, so tomorrow morning, the group of students who went and answered questions are going to the middle school to present to the entire eighth grade class and answer more questions. Um, at the high school, the major fundraiser for Project Graduation, uh, is going to feature the comedy hypnotist, David Hall, um, and he is going to perform at the high school on April second, two thousand and sixteen, um, and tickets for that can be purchased through community services, um, at Town Hall and starting March second, so. Um, and then prom is going to be May seventh, um, at the Italian Heritage Club in Portland. Um, this past weekend, which was March fourth and fifth, the high school's one act team went to the one act festival and competition, um, where they competed against several different teams and performed the show Expose Holiday Celebrities Tell All. And although our team will not be going to the state competition this year, um, four members of the team, Molly Alcom, Amy Olive, Ben Rico, and Hayden Mader won individual acting awards, and our costumer, Gabby Leon, was given an individual award for her costume design. Um, the student health advisory board has finished their application process, and we're kind of up and running now, um, so the board officers and our faculty correspondents would just like to congratulate those who were accepted into this program and thank everyone who took the time to complete the application and interviewing process. There were a lot of things. Um, and then the hockey state championship against Lewiston was this past weekend, um, so we had a lot of support come out for our boys team. Um, so, so congratulations to the hockey team on a great season, as well as the title of Southern Maine champ and state runner-up. Although I was unable to attend, I heard it was a pretty great game. Are that all of us?
Thank you. I also want to give a shout out to the Wentworth PTA for an excellent theme fair. That was a rock and good time. Um, that place was packed, there were kids and parents, just almost the entire first floor of Wentworth, with the exception of the classroom wings, were covered with kids. They were in the learning commons and the cafeteria, um, they were in the hallways doing a drum circle. There was even an obstacle course in the health room, um, that was, I didn't go through the obstacle course, but it seemed very fun, and it somehow tied into the science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Um, it was a wild good time. I mean, they had people there from, um, public work, talking about bodily functions and how that's recycled, and, um, there was, uh, newspaper geodesic dome. I mean, they, it was incredible stuff that was going on there, and a lot of it was, you know, volunteer parents that came up with the things. There was, um, chocolate bar modeling, wildly popular tables. That one, I was next to it, my origami table, not getting as much action. There's the chocolate bar modeling, there was, uh, jelly bean, uh, structures. You could build structures with jelly beans. I mean, there was a lot of cool stuff happening there. And kids had a little passport that they would take around to each station and get stamped as they went along, and it was fun. It was a fun night. I think those kids went home tired at the end of that night.
Through the chairs, would Dr. Enfusso please tell the public about the letter received from the teacher at Lewiston High School? We, we don't talk about the good things about sometimes, and, and I just think that was absolutely fabulous.
Uh, Mr. Perry, I'd, I'd welcome you to talk about it. I mean, I know what you're talking about, but why don't, why don't you talk about it?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Legage actually received the letter. Excuse me, please. Uh, it was forwarded to us from a teacher at Lewiston High School, who was at the game, at the hockey game, and had nothing but praise for our student athletes and our fans and how they can, and our coaches and how they conducted themselves and how professional they were and what great sports they were in a losing situation. And it is difficult to lose, and it's more difficult when you've been the state champion, but to do it with such class and to be, for us to be notified that that occurred is really an indication of the type of student we're raising and the type of coaches we're hiring and the type of parents who are supporting our programs.
That is a very good lead in for our next agenda item, recognition.
Right. Um, so, thanks for pointing that out, Jackie. I think that that, that is nice, and we've gotten not only formal, not only informal recognition of the sportsmanship of many of our teams, but we've also had formal recognition through sports means, uh, sportsmanship awards, which I think is really as valuable as, as walking away with a state title, as far as I'm concerned. Um, Mrs. Murphy, uh, was, I think she's prompted by my, my cue here, and, uh, the recognition that I wanted to, um, provide was about the theme fair at Wentworth, and I, I'll just hit some of the highlights. This is the second annual theme fair. Uh, some people may not know what theme is, but you and I do. It is science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. And, um, I think, uh, you spoke to how well it was received. Um, uh, the PTA president, Linda Barber Shield, presented a, a really nice report out, and that was one of my, uh, sources for this, this recognition. Um, it's a collaborative effort, uh, as Kelly said, with the PTA, but it does involve community members, community organizations, parents, and Wentworth staff, including our staff from, uh, the STEM area, um, allied arts, learning com- commons, along with, um, classroom teachers and some of our instructional coaches. So it runs the gamut. Um, but I, I was not there, but I imagine that some of the special presenters that got particular attention, uh, uh, were some of the students that were also presenting. And we had students from our, um, middle school there, a senior from the Westburg Regional Vocational High School, and boy scouts from Troop Forty-Seven.
Lemon pock, they're making lemon batters.
Yeah. Um, I think, uh, I just captured a, a quote from Ms. Barber Shield's report that, uh, that was from a dad, um, Joe Ford, who said, "We came to this year's fair with the plan to stay only an hour or so." And this has happened to all of us with lot, with, who have lots of kids. We, you know, you're like, okay, we'll go, but we're just going for an hour. Uh, we, well, we're leaving at six. Um, we ended up staying for the full duration of the fair, and my kids would have stayed another hour if the fair was open longer. So, um, a, a really nice, uh, a really nice success there. I'll give you a copy of, uh, Linda Barber Shield's, uh, report if you would like to pass those, I guess, this way and this way, to, to the pile. And, um, so recognizing that tremendous success in terms of theme, uh, very consistent with where we're going curriculum-wise as well, so.
Okay. So, new business. We have a first reading of the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen school calendar. And, um, do you want to do a lead in?
Sure. Um, and then we could, uh, we could maybe, um, ask for a motion, so we can discuss that. Uh, so the draft of the school calendar for sixteen seventeen is presented, uh, tonight as the first reading, and it's appearing on the school board agenda about a month later than it's typically scheduled. Uh, the delay was for good reason, as the board and school staff and community members explored the possibility of adjusting school start times for our pre-adolescents and our adolescents, middle and high school, so that they might start later in respa-, in response to what many of us see as very indisputable research evidence that later start times really support better health for those kiddos and better learning outcomes for them as well. Um, while it's been determined, uh, that a, a change cannot, uh, be, uh, adopted for twenty sixteen seventeen, uh, there appears to be a commitment to continue to work creatively to set, uh, start times in twenty seventeen eighteen school year that would be more consistent with those recommendations that we're getting from the pediatric experts and the pediatric research. And the draft school calendar for twenty sixteen seventeen as a starting point is essentially unchanged from the current schedule. Um, of course, it's adjusted for the, the new date, the, the new year, uh, but it's, it's essentially a mirror image of the current, uh, school calendar.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Use approval as presented.
Second. Okay. So, just as a, kind of another forward to this conversation, so we had an outstanding calendar committee that was, um, had staff members and administrators and community members and board members, um, and we met and we talked, and most everyone agreed that there was a lot of validity to the research and that this was something worth pursuing. Um, we had a presentation from local physician and then a letter signed by several local physicians, I think up to twelve or thirteen, um, the CDC, National Fleet Foundation, American Academy of Pediatrics, National, um, Psychiatric Association. I mean, the list goes on and on of all these entities that, uh, really urging schools to take a look at their start times and to see, um, what they could potentially do to improve the health and well-being and, um, student performance essentially for high school and middle school kids. So, um, the calendar committee was sort of assembled, uh, no, it was assembled to look at the topic and give, um, the board, the full board, kind of their recommendation of where this is gonna go, uh, where they would hope it would go. Um, in the meantime, the full board is sort of on their own and collectively decided this is an issue worth pursuing, and we have, uh, spent a lot of time working with administrators and trying to see if there's, there is any possible way to implement a change this year, and unfortunately, there just isn't. We have a lot of logistical issues in Scarborough that other towns don't. Um, so you may have seen in the press that other schools have made changes, and we can't do it yet. We have too many things, um, standing in the way, and buses being a big, a big hurdle that we still can't figure out how to overcome. So, at this point, it's not gonna happen in the fall, but we are still gonna be working full steam ahead to try to make it happen, um, for the fall of two thousand and seventeen. Um, and at some point, someone remind me to make the statement from Donna, but does anyone else have any comments they have?
I, I have a question. So, I had one of the calendars that was in my packet, and it said it was updated March eighth, two thousand and sixteen, when I arrived tonight. There was one that's updated today.
Yep.
It was last year. There's no changes?
No, there's one, one little change, and Kelly, why don't you explain, uh?
Sorry. I was trying to look to figure out what was. Oh, yes.
Oh.
So, Martin, hence it's the correction.
Okay. Um, Jackie?
Yes, I would like to offer an amendment to the calendar, and I would, my amendment is this, that November eighth, which is, uh, Presidential Election Day, that there be no classes at Scarborough High School. That instead of a high school late start day on the second of November, that the staff have a staff day on the eighth. And I offer this because I participated in, uh, one of the caucuses last weekend, and participation was, was really quite overwhelming, uh, by both parties. And it is anticipated that this election, uh, will outdistance more recent elections in numbers, probably doubling the attendance. So, I just think it's in the best interest of our citizens to be able to have access to the high school without the students there.
Do we have a second amendment for your question?
Well, I have one other question about this, because I remember, I recall a while back that when we were having some kind of workshop, that Principal Creach had said that MEA was coming on November eighth for their, was it, uh, day visitor. Um, I'm not, I don't want to be specific as to what it was called, but it was something, it was like their two-day visit or whatever it was called, and I looked at David and I said, "I think that's Election Day." Now, I, what happened after that, I don't know, so I don't know if he ever checked with them to see if that could be reworked, or if it just was like, these were the dates we were given, we've been given them nine months in advance, and there's nothing we can do. So, that being said, that could be another hook in one of the stuff.
Yes. Uh, I just remember the last election, which was, I think it's the gubernatorial election, and it was passed, and we had a table there, a booth, and we received so many complaints about parking and having to park at Wentworth and walk up. And, uh, I'm hopeful that maybe that MEA's visit, if it needs to involve kids, could happen at a different time.
Okay.
So if it doesn't involve kids, it's not that big of a deal in that. I, I think it's a great opportunity for staff development at high school.
I recall the last time there was a presidential election, am I right about this? That, that was the day that high schools were offsite, they did offsite. Do you know, is there any plan in the works for that this year? I mean, far out to know that, to have a last election on the eighth.
The first new calendar.
Yeah. I didn't know if that was something that was already in the works.
I hear that, I hear that.
That was, that was what the, I mean.
And I think that David, as we can, as we're talking about these, and just, um, I, I, um, I think it's a, a sound like the, uh, the recommended amendment, and we, we, we don't know. So, I don't know if they rescheduled, but even if, even if they didn't reschedule, it, it, it could totally, the, 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 the.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just saying, my amendment is to replace that, but if it's in the best interest of the high school to keep that late start day on November second and still not have high school students there on the eighth, that's fine with me. I'm just finding.
So I guess I would have a question.
Accommodate the best we can, but I really don't want students at Scarborough High School on the eighth of November.
Yeah. Okay. A year ago.
A lot of years ago.
Um, as I recall, in the last case in Long Island, did everybody have the day off on Election Day? I remember all the schools didn't have to, is that right?
I would say that, yeah.
Okay, so I mean, well, I mean, like I said, our own back ways. Um, so if we were just to do the high school, how does that then, 'cause, 'cause now suddenly the high school student days are a hundred and seventy-seven, everyone else is a hundred and seventy-eight.
student days are a hundred and seventy-seven, everyone else is a hundred and seventy-eight.
That's, that's exactly what would happen.
And that would be it, so.
And that's what.
So, then the buses will still run to take all the middle school kids for everybody else.
Yeah.
What are your feelings on eliminating the late start that next week for?
Yeah, eliminating, anything that's hurting them, if they're suffering, I'll address that as well, just in terms of some other considerations that I want to raise for the board, um, but typically, um, I would not support that amendment from the educational leader's perspective, um, but I absolutely, uh, given what the high school has on its plate, given the incredible pressure in terms of really sort of reinventing themselves from reinventing our schedule and the way that we do scheduling, our, uh, re-looking and doing a very deep look at, uh, our curriculum, um, going through a significant self-study that can be a great professional learning experience for our staff, which is MEA, um, given all of that work and the, and, and the regular work that we're putting them to do, I would agree with Ms. Perry's recommendation that the students not be there as long as the high school uses the eight to accelerate, to organize, but November is a great time to organize and in fact, maybe it would work perfectly for MEA to be visiting and if that's what they're doing is to kickstart around the organization, um, and really get us organized and get us off on the right foot because there's a tremendous amount of work. We're integrating and changing the environment in terms of one-to-one, um, we've got proficiency-based, uh, requirements that are continued to move and quite honestly, it is the high school, to my view, not because of anything that they don't have in terms of capacity or talent, but they have the longest way to go to, to really, um, uh, to really be where we want them to be, uh, which is a, you know, a true twenty-first century high school that has a twenty-first century schedule, that has that coordinated and, uh, and logical and achievable curriculum, et cetera, et cetera, and, and one that is accredited, one that is MEA's accredited, we absolutely want that for sure. So, I would agree with Ms., uh, Perry's amendment, I have some other thoughts on it, but I think you still haven't answered.
Okay.
So, I also thought that, and this is just my thought and I'm not trying to tell the high school how to do their business, but having taught high school for a number of years, uh, when you, when you get to the, to the exam time, maybe the exams could be consolidated a little more and get an extra day in there, just as a suggestion.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment? Hi, Miss Flump.
Just, just to be clear, I, there was an amended amendment, right, Ms. Perry, it was really just about the, about the faculty.
Right, right, just the eight. No, yeah, but that wasn't about that. So, now we're back to the main motion, um, and so I will read Donna's statement that she sent from sunny Florida.
Well, I had spoken to Donna before I moved here.
Okay. So, Donna says, "Our teachers and our administrators have told us numerous times for the past two years to give them additional time to do the professional work necessary to improve student learning and performance. Our high school staff is undoubtedly stretched right now, completing MEA's requirements, discussing a new schedule and also planning for proficiency-based education. Our middle school needs the time to align their work with the high school for a seamless transition. Our K to five staff needs the time to work on alignment with standards and also ensure our reading program, particularly in K two, is not neglected. It is essential that the board find a way, one way or another, to increase the time our educators need to do this very important work." So, that amendment helps in the high school, please. So, any other discussion from board members right now about that?
Sure, um, I, I think, uh, consistent with what Donna's message is, I think, um, when the leadership council has been here in various, set up and for various presentations or they've been asked in terms of what, what is it they need most, what they, everything needs most is more time. Um, uh, we are working with less time than most, most other districts by far and less time by far than what this district used to work with. And on the flip side, the expectations that we have of our teachers in terms of their performance, in terms of their expectations that we have around instruction, around instructions, et cetera, um, have, have only escalated. Um, so, uh, as for the leadership council and for me, uh, the calendar for next year does not, in the starting point, uh, provide the kind of adjustments that we've asked for in terms of, uh, time for additional learning, uh, for our teachers and our instructional staff. Um, I and we are hopeful that the school board will pursue restoring, uh, some of those lost teacher, uh, days, um, and, and, and restoring, uh, uh, teacher learning time that's been lost by perhaps, uh, looking at the negotiations that are coming up, looking at the contract, uh, that is in front of you and, um, adding at, at least one, uh, new day of time, that's seven hours for each of the years of the contract, which would, which would move us, uh, to getting restored back to the level of professional learning time that historically has been, had been built and had been protected here in Scarborough before, uh, the time of the economic downturn, when everything was, was, you know, everything was on the block and many things, uh, got chopped. Uh, I think we completely understand, uh, the challenge and probably understand the challenge better than anyone of supporting teacher, uh, of supporting teachers in meeting all of those expectations and mandates that they have, um, and at the same time, without, um, uh, using, um, important instructional time to offset that. But if we have to balance it, I'm telling you, the balance needs to be more learning time because that, in effect, will improve the quality even though it's marginally minimized of the time that is being spent. So, I, so I think it's, I think it really is important to know that we do have a clear understanding of what that balance is between instructional time and teacher learning time. And right now, my bet would be that the biggest improvements will happen if we invest in more teacher learning time. Now, if the, if the board and the, and the association are successful at looking at building in some additional days and we have the budget resources to do that, then by all means, that doesn't impact instructional time and that's the best, uh, the best way to do it. Um, the thing that we need to really look at is the MEA's accreditation. For anyone who's done through this, this is not child's play and this is not something that you can fake your way through, not that I would suggest that we would wanna do that anyway. It's a, it's a tremendous opportunity for professional learning, but it requires everyone's involvement and it is not necessarily directly tied to, to moving some of the other pieces forward, like our one-to-one or adjusting to a new schedule or adjusting to teaching in a new schedule, um, and even some of the proficiency pieces. It really is a self-reflection process and, um, and it, and it is critically important. So, um, I'd like to propose that on a monthly basis, we add one additional, uh, late start to the high school, specifically for the purpose of doing the adequate and appropriate preparation for MEA. Now, if, if the board is successful in changing the contract to add a day as well, that seven hours would be welcomed and, and would not be overkill by, by any means. Um, that would still leave the high school with less professional learning time than most other high schools in the area. And if we were to add, uh, on the basis of Ms. Perry's amendment, the seven hours that would also be MEA's focus, that too would be, uh, right, right on target and, and very appropriate. So, I'm suggesting that if, and, and believe me, I would be suggesting that we, uh, uh, do this for all of the schools if I were confident that we could achieve this in a different way, which is specifically by adding another day. So, I'm gonna count on that, but the, the high school cannot be left to chance and, um, and I think that if you imagine the high school, the continuity of instruction in the high school when they do a late start is really not interrupted, it's just each of the periods is shortened a bit. So, the te- the kids still have contact with the same teachers that they would have contact with and the continuity of instruction would still be the same from whatever the day was before. So, um, again, does it impact instructional time? Yes, it lessens it, but it's critically important that we add that additional late start day, one time per month, to give them a bulk of, of time that is regular and predictable and routine to work on MEA. And, um, and I'm hopeful and I'll do everything I can to support and help the board and the association, um, begin to add back what is really is so cherished, um, in, in these kind of organizations right now and, and we just don't have enough of it. And, and that will then, uh, help all of the other schools at least gain seven more hours that can be put, that can be added into the teacher work schedule and specifically devoted, uh, to, to professional learning.
I'm assuming that's food for thought, the, the first reading, um, in, in that is in addition to the seven hours that Jackie just found us, thank you very much, um, and also in addition to if, if our negotiation team is able to work their magic and get that into the contract.
Yeah.
May I say that, that's never been a problem if the money's in the budget.
The money issue.
It is a money issue. It's not, it's really not a negotiations issue, it's a money issue.
And I would say, I would say that should be for just next year only, during the self-study year.
The extra day you're talking about? Okay, so.
No, the extra, the.
That extra late start, sorry, the extra late start.
Well.
At the height.
Um, they're still, I mean, they're still gonna need that time, we're, we're still just playing catch-up here.
Right.
So, I do think that I'm anticipating seven extra hours for everybody, all, all, all of our, our instructional staff and for the, for the purposes of, of MEA next year, the additional late start and, um, and now the, the day that has been changed in terms of November eighth amended to be a, a no-student day for next year only.
Right, okay, well, that's one question you asked, right. So, if you were to add in an extra late start, and I know that you've always been or the administration's always been cognizant of the fact that you try to not do it on days where there's a short week already or a holiday or a vacation or what have you, where, I'm sure you've looked at this, right? Where would those fall?
They would likely fall, they would likely fall, and they, there's generally a Wednesday in between.
That's correct.
That board that is, uh, that is connected with, um, both, uh, district-wise and the current high school. So, I would, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't fit a perfect pattern, but that's what I would expect, uh, in terms of where we're gonna have them.
So, potentially, it could fall in a week where there's a H, like, um, a week or a...
I think, I think we try to avoid the H weeks, um, for the, for just the district, for, for just the district, um, late start.
Oh, just the district, not the high school one, no, no.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Remembering that districts around us, all around us, are doing late starts every Wednesday.
Oh, is this something that the, the policy committee will be looking at to bring forward to us or are you looking for us to make a motion tonight or?
I think we're hoping, no, 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 I, that's, I'm just, I'm.
Yeah, you're throwing it out there.
This is fir- this is first reading, so it's kinda things to think about. The amendment that you made is actually an amendment now to this draft, but, but mine is not an amendment. I don't have the, I can't bring an amendment. But, um, I'm bringing it to you as food for thought because I, and, and basically making the case that we need to, we need to think about the importance of the MEA's accreditation and what that means to this high school in this town and we need to adequately provide the high school with the resources, specifically time, that they need to get that important work done. And, um, I'd be happy and, uh, along with Joanne to work with Kelly and, you know, who's been doing the, the calendaring and Carrie or, or Donna, whoever it is, and see if we can't run some iterations of, of different proposals and see what we do. This won't come back on the docket again until April, April, uh, seven.
Seven.
So, we have a, you know, we have a month, although we know that a month is really not very long.
Snap your fingers, it'll be over. Sure.
I guess in that discussion with whomever that happens with, I would like to see some sort of, um, creative idea. Um, I just feel like we keep going to the parent well, asking them to change their schedule every year. Um, like, I know we're, we're changing the schedule for the high school next year, is there a block of time that can somehow be figured into that day that we can find time? Is, are there, there's staff, monthly staff meetings, can we take a couple of those and somehow come together, um, with a little bit from the high school side and a little bit from the board side and a little bit from the parent's side and come together, you know, with a compromise that doesn't feel great for everybody, which is the definition of it, but, uh, I just don't wanna be tone deaf to the outrage and, um, discussions that happened last year. Uh, we sat here and we listened to people say, "Oh, so next year you're gonna ask for more and next year you're gonna do this," and here we are.
Just a comment to bounce back off of you on that, in my opinion, it's not asking the parents for more because there's still bus transportation because the buses are still running for all the other schools. So, if it were just a late start for the high school, which is what we're only looking at, or what's being suggested not, that we're looking to say anything about it, like to move it forward right now, but that's only the high school. And the high school, as I've been told by many high school students that my daughter strung with is, if they can't get a ride because their parents is not home or what have you, or they don't have a car, or they don't have somebody else to take them, they still can take the bus. And my understanding is that it's been very productive for many of them to go and either go to the library and do some research that they needed to get done or be in the cafeteria and do some work or whatever it might be. Like, I had a practice late last night so I couldn't finish all my work, you know, I mean, so those were things where the kids were like, "Oh, thank gosh, I have that late start tomorrow morning because I'm not finished with whatever it was." Or, "I've got this project and I've got a group that I need to meet with and, oh, these other two kids are gonna be at school tomorrow morning so the three of us can get together." So, I, I don't see it the same way you do, but I think we might be coming from two different perspectives because I have a student at the high school who has benefited from that as well as has benefited from not going early. So, I mean, it's, it's different, but I don't know if Lizzie has anything to say on that.
Oh, let me get all eyes on you.
Lizzie wants to weigh, we're all staring at you, Lizzie.
Well, I can, I totally agree with what you're saying. I personally have had to go in on the normal bus for late starts many times to get things done and I think the, whenever I've gone, the percentage of students who are there early in the morning is small enough that I'm not sure that it's that much of a scheduling issue for the parents because, of course, I'm not a parent, so I can't really speak from a parent's perspective, but, um, because so many people do come at the normal late start time instead of the normal seven, seven fifteen, whenever the bus gets to the school, the majority of people have a ride to get there or can drive themselves. So, I think, I don't think it's gonna be as much of an issue as it might on the surface appear to be. So, that's just my two cents. So, that's just my two cents.
Carrie, too?
Yeah, I agree with what Jody said. And I'm relieved that this calendar isn't acting for more late starts, um, for the rest of the grades. I have less objection to more late starts for the high school than I would for the, um, K-8. Um, and in fact, I feel like it goes this far of a distance towards apologizing for not being able to do later start dimes for adolescents for next year. At least maybe they'll have three Wednesdays a month when they are getting the recommended amount of sleep, so.
Right. But it's right in the, smack dab in the middle of the week, which is probably pretty good.
Right, it helps a little bit. So, I, I would be willing to talk more about an additional late start for the high school.
Me too.
Um, just as a little research aside, that creates jet lag.
That's right, it doesn't actually help.
When it's just one day in a week, it creates a jet lag effect, and they're not getting the benefit from it.
However, those Wednesdays maybe will be productive days in classes.
So, I am not super in favor of adding another late start for the high school, um, for a variety of reasons, but not the least of which is we had a lot of parents last year very concerned about instructional time, which we weighed the pros and cons of the benefit of professional development time, um, with the lost instructional time. And I do agree, there is a benefit. I'm just not sure where that tipping point is for, for the students. And, um, not saying I'm not open to the conversation, I definitely am. But for me, when I see every administrator come here and ask for time over and over and over again, I feel like that should become a budget priority for us, to put our money where our mouth is and where our administrators are telling us we will get the most benefit. So, for me, if we need seven extra hours in addition to the seven hours we're hoping to get in the budget and the seven hours that Jackie just found us, I would like to see that in the budget. I'm not on the finance committee, so I just have to look longingly at the finance chair to see if that is a possibility. But, I mean, for me, that's what we hear. What's the one thing you need? And every single administrator tells us it's time. Every single, every single episode, every single time. So, if that's the priority, that should be our budgetary priority, is my opinion, rather than trying to steal a little time here and a little bit there and work it in where we can. Let's pay for it. And then we'll have the staff when we need them at the exact times that would be the most beneficial. So, that's my perspective on it, that we should be paying for it if it's our number one priority and our most requested need in district-wide. And then that's not just only benefiting the high school, who undoubtedly needs it this year more than ever. But I'm sure there are a lot of K-2 staff members saying, "Hey, but what about us and our reading curriculum?" You know, so it's, I think, um, it would be a benefit to all staff at all levels, so pay for it.
This is a, you know, this is really, my recommendation is intended to be a specific NEAS-related one-year accommodation because, because while I completely applaud what you just said, I know that that's not going to, we, we are not going to gain the time that we need. If we do it success, you know, incrementally through the contract, that will be awesome. Um, but that's not going to help the, the high school next year. And, and that's what really needs to, that's what really, we need to accommodate that need next year for the high school specifically, and work on getting everybody the time that they need.
But can I ask why that wouldn't be if we, say, had two days built into the contract that we were paying teachers outside of school day?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, now, now we're beginning, now we're beginning to get up there, but.
Right, that's, that's, because that's what I was wondering, like, if it would be.
It's a hundred, it's approximately $130,000.
Right, I'm not on finance, so whatever, it's good for me.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
For you. I, I'm okay with that, so, I mean, I honestly am.
I, I know.
That's, that's the priority, let's pay for it.
The reality is we've lost 1.6 million.
Not all of that anymore.
Well, we might get four or five hundred.
Okay, so, anyway, I, unless anyone has anything else right now for a first reading, do we have, uh, are we ready to vote as, accepting the, the motion on the table to, um, accept the calendar as presented with the amendment for our first reading? All in favor? Five plus one, thank you. Okay, that takes us to 11.0 adjournment. Do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Thank you, and have a good night.